I'd like to call this meeting of Lakewood City Council for Monday, August 6th. To order, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bokey, Councilmember Barth, Councilmember Moss, Councilmember Simpson, Deputy Mayor Whelan, Mayor Anderson, and Councilmember Bransitter is not here. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you all now please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to proclamations and presentations. The sole item in that category is a Clover Park School District report. For this, we have School Director Alyssa Anderson Pearson.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson, Deputy Mayor Whelan, and council members. Thank you for having me here tonight. Our students and staff are still enjoying a couple more weeks of summer, and they will start back to school on Wednesday, August 29th. The school supply lists are available on our website, and this year, all elementary and middle schools have condensed school supply lists, and all the lists are the same for the elementary and middle schools this year to make it easier for parents. Summer school is in session through August 10th, and it is important to remember that the school safety zones are in effect during summer school, which I know is some people aren't expecting. During the summer, many improvements have been made to the schools. We have been busy, so there's been a lot of safety enhancement improvements at many of the schools, security fencing and gates that we've worked with the city on, parking lot improvements and playground replacements. This includes Lockburn, Lake Louise, and Idowild. I know parents were having a really difficult time at the drop-off and pickups at Idowild and Lake Louise, so we're really hoping that that's better this year. And then you might have noticed that the Clover Park High School pool was closed this summer. There was a lot of renovations needed, so hopefully that will be finishing up soon. And we also replaced roofs and district-wide painting. We had a lot of capital projects to do. And we are continuing to work on the new middle school. It's expected to open the fall of 2020. We were notified that the funds were approved, so we got 20% of the construction costs through the state construction assistance program. We are currently installing new water lines as required by Lakewood Water, and that's scheduled to complete on August 15th. And the contract should come to the board in September, and groundbreaking, or we should break ground in early October, so we're very excited about that. We have also had many administrative changes that occurred this summer. The most noticeable was obviously the superintendent retiring, so we're very excited to have Doug Kernit being the interim superintendent for this year. We obviously will have to start the superintendent search here soon, since that's not a permanent position. Ron Banner has stepped into the deputy superintendent role, which we're excited about. This is a new position for this year, as we didn't have it the past few years. And we also have many other changes, including new principals and new director of communications, which I know will work closely with the city. That is most of what I have, because we're still in summer vacation. But I did want to mention that I definitely heard you last time about statistics and data, and I did try to look up the graduation rates for this year compared to the previous two years. Those numbers aren't finalized till October, so if I gave them tonight, they wouldn't be accurate, because they're still digging up information from students who transferred, and I guess it takes some detective work. So does anyone have any questions?
Any questions from council? Mr. Whelan.
So how goes the prospect of the new contracts for the coming fall year? Is there fairly typical turnover, or is it healthier than in past years, or better?
The turnover.
For staff and teachers, right?
Our turnover is higher than we would like it to be. That isn't a secret, and I think it's been about the same as previous years. So we are working on finding a way to retain staff and make them stay at the Clover Park School District. It's a challenge, and we are definitely working on that. But I would say it's been, we have a relatively high turnover.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, thank you. We have been provided with a copy of a letter dated July 27th, over the signature of Paul Wagaman as the council, the board's legislative representative to the federal administration, the governor, and others regarding the desire of the school district to suspend Amtrak operations on the point-of-finance bypass route, and just like to pass on our thanks for joining in that opposition and support of safety in our community.
Yes, of course. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We now move to consent agenda, or excuse me, we now move to public comments. Haven't been provided my list. This is a time when any member of the public may speak to any item of interest to the council, whether or not it is on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please come forward in your name as called. Identify yourself by name and city of residence, such as Mary Moss, Lakewood, Washington. You have three minutes to speak. The yellow light comes on when 30 seconds is left in your time. Red light comes on when your time has expired. The first person signed up to speak is Kurt Sample.
Hi, I'm Kurt Sample. I live on Anderson Island, but my heart is always with Lakewood's youth. For those who've been wondering what I've been doing for the past couple of years, I've been saving a 100-acre Presbyterian camp from being closed. And I'm happy to announce, after filling a lot of dumpsters and taking a lot of ibuprofen and working pretty hard, we've managed to get the camp out of the woods. And presently, we have the Washington National Guard Youth Camp there, or WANGI Camp, and these are the kids of National Guardsmen that are now enjoying a week of summer camp at Camp Soundview, which is a camp I'm directing. And I come here mostly because I'm always wondering about what is missing in kids' lives and what we could do to make their education a lot better. And a lot of school districts over the past years have gone to camps for outdoor education, outdoor environmental education, where they'll bring a classroom out to a camp where they'll learn about nature, they'll learn about each other, they'll learn about team building. And since I've taken over this camp, we've had numerous schools come out and appreciate our beautiful waterfront and sandy beach. But I'm not here to plug camp. I'm here pretty much to plug the whole idea of environmental outdoor education for kids. Clover Park School District does not do it. They probably did it years ago, and because of budgetary or other considerations, they are no longer doing environmental outdoor education at all. And I just think that's really sad. Most of Lakewood kids I know have never been out camping, have never had a chance to see the sunrise, have never had a chance to learn about nature beyond what they see in their backyard. And I don't know if there's anything you can do, whether, if there's any emphasis you can put into the educational system that encourages people to learn about nature and the environment, but I just think it's really important. And so I just wanted to let you know, as I always came up to you for the past 10 years and told you about the trends in youth and what you should be considering doing, I think even after all these years, getting a kid out in the woods, away from their environment, seeing their teachers in blue jeans is very, very important. And I think it equals as much in social growth as they do just by going to school for a year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nick. The next person who signed up is Mr. Dennis Haugen.
Dennis Haugen. Take this word, let it soak in, results, results. You don't ask the questions. Why, for the last how many years, have you had the school board come here and talk to you? We pay money for a service, and that's to learn certain things. We have schools in the Clover Park District that need better results. And it just flies over your head every time. I don't know why, I don't know why they're here, to talk. They don't talk about anything relevant, it's just superficiality. You know, you just come back from Minnesota and, you know, all those little small towns all across the United States. They're great at having parades in celebration of history. The immigrants that came over here to settle those quarter sections would have to go out there and turn over the sod to get it ready for the next year in 100-degree heat, and then they gotta build a house out of sod, just to protect themselves from 30 below zero winters. They had no electricity, they had no water. They fought, and they struggled, and they struggled, and the communities grew, and even though their houses, they finally built some fine houses, they didn't have running water, they didn't have electricity, and they kept on building, and then they built schools. Anybody that's got running water and electricity is living in luxury according to the standards of the world and the standards that our immigrants put up with to build this country. Of course, the school district doesn't want to talk about test scores, because that's a measurement, and nobody's got the guts to push them to the task. We want those kids to do something, and as taxpayers, it's learn something. Say the old three Rs. Learn it and measure it, and show us that you're giving a dollar's worth. Quit messing around. Start asking some relevant questions.
Next person signed up is Mr. Ron Carter.
Mayor Anderson, members of the board. I'm Ron Carter. I live in Lakewood. My house is on the corner of Norwood Drive and Angle Lane. If you're not familiar with that, Angle Lane is the road that goes from Hipkins out to Fort Stilicon Park. There's a lot of traffic that uses the park, which is a good thing, on one hand, because it's a fine park and the city's put a lot of money into it, and I appreciate that. On the downside, there's a lot of traffic that goes down Angle Lane to the park. That's a 25 mile an hour road. The majority of those people don't drive anywhere close to 25 miles an hour. I can tell you that the majority, not the majority, but a high number of vehicles travel that road in excess of 40 miles an hour, and some of them much faster than that. I can also tell that that is not a speed estimate. That is a speed that's been measured by a certified and calibrated radar speed measuring device that's authorized for use in Washington State. So the speeds I'm giving you are accurate. They also have a lot of foot traffic, people walking to and from the park with their kids, their dogs, their cats, their whatever, to use the park facilities that you have provided for them. So these people walking to the park are endangered by all these vehicles that are traveling at a high rate of speed and a much higher traffic density than was there when I bought my house 18 years ago. So my fear is the proximity of all these people walking to and from the park and these vehicles that are traveling at a high rate of speed to and from the park, from Oak Brook, going to Albertson's, going to Stilicon, to use the ferrier to take part of the Stilicon features that they have there. That traffic all goes down Angle Lane. So I would like to ask the city to try to figure out something to do to slow the speeds. There was a speed issue on Tower and on Interlochen. The city came in and put speed humps on those two roads to mitigate the traffic speeds on those two roads. I was asked the city to do something similar to that on Angle Lane and possibly Elwood. I don't live on Elwood, I drive down that road, but it's also a 25 mile an hour road that leads to the park. So I'm assuming that their speed issues would be comparable to the ones we face on Angle Lane, since it's essentially one road, just two different names. I'm sure you're familiar with it. Lakewood's propensity to change the names on one piece of asphalt from one intersection to the next. But there's a lot of traffic. I see people, moms with their kids in strollers, little kids walking with them to the park. I would hate to think it would take something tragic to happen to somebody before we could get something done with the speed control on Angle and Elwood as well. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Mark Pfeifer.
Mark Pfeifer, I live in Lakewood. Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Quick, Eurasian milfoil. Anybody familiar with it? Shake your heads up and down. It's choking up the shoreline of American Lake. Not Gravel Lake, not Lake Louise, I don't think Wahop Lake has a problem, Mud Lake, who cares? But American Lake, it is starting to choke it up, and it's been around for a few years The city of Lakewood owns approximately 750 linear feet of American Lake. But I, just intuitively, I venture to say that most of the people that are using the lake don't live on the lake, and they get on the lake through American Lake Park. So the city is responsible for all these people coming and enjoying the lake. A lot of them, by the way, are probably the ones that brought the milfoil in the first place on their boat trailers and wrapped around their, you know, their props. But the American Lake Improvement Club has gone through a significant change. We have new leadership. I'm on the board. Kurt Spengath is the president, and we're starting an effort, working with a gentleman from Public Works. They've gotten initial grants, they're working on a second grant. But it's going to take more than just trying to get the lake residents to pony up some money, because that's not really fair. They're not the ones that did it, and we already pay higher taxes per square foot than Gravel Lake pays, because it's a much nicer lake. But there are other stakeholders, the army, of course, which doesn't own as much of the lake as I thought they did. It's only about 29%. VA, the National Guard, those government entities and Lakewood own about a total of 55-plus percent, and private owners own 44.15%. And I think it's going to take the city of Lakewood to step up to those governmental agencies and get them to shoulder their share of cleaning that lake up, because they use it too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Glenn Spieth.
Glenn Spieth, Lakewood. It wasn't until last Wednesday that I saw that we've got speakers all over the ceiling, and we wonder why we have feedback. Now, the current system is not too bad. However, you get down into your study sessions, and you have to turn it down so much that you might as well not even have the speakers on, almost, because you can't hear everybody. Some people are louder and talking than others, some use the microphones more than others, and it makes it very difficult. I'm in the second row, and I can hardly hear what's going on during study sessions. Think of the people in the back. Most of those that I've polled can't hear a thing. So I think there still needs to be more improvement. It's getting there. This system isn't too bad right now, but when it's down there, you're getting feedback right from those mics. Second thing, with all the improvements that you're doing on the town center, do not forget to work on some of the roads in Lakewood, like Lakewood Drive. The northern section of Lakewood Drive has got a lot of potholes. It needs something relatively soon. It's a rough riding area. We fixed up a lot of the roads in Lakewood now, but I think that still needs, not to be forgotten, because of what we're doing with the town center. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Marty Harris.
Hello, I'm Marty Harris. I actually have a school council at Lockburn Middle School, and I'm here with some of my colleagues from Clover Park Education Association, just to here to let you know that, you know, maybe you've even noticed that at the farmers markets, we're here to let folks know that we're, and I think you asked that question a little earlier, about the negotiations for our teachers in that school district. Obviously, I've been at Lockburn for 31 years. I've spent my whole career at one school. Actually, that's true. I was a school psychologist for the first nine, but Lockburn's always been one of my schools, and now I'm a councilor there. So I've dedicated my career there, stayed in Clover Park, which is my firsthand experience. I'll tell you, that is, that's an unusual endeavor. We've lost about 500 teachers in the last three years out of 900 positions, so it's quite an exodus. That's enough people have left Clover Park District. I can't say it's always for salary, I can't say that, because it may be for a variety of reasons. But we want you to know that, you know, we want, those of us are here, and many of my colleagues, we want to stay here, we want to finish our careers here, like myself, who's had opportunities. I could have gone somewhere else, but I chose to stay in, at the poorest secondary school in western Washington, which is Lockburn Middle School. Challenging school, but we have a lot of challenging schools in Clover Park, 14 Title One schools, 14 schools identified as challenging schools by the state, but we have a lot of people who work hard every day, making those schools the best schools they can be for our kids. And you know, as good schools, it makes a good community, and it's what we all want. So we just want you to know that, anyway, I know that it's been some, you have a positive relationship with the school district. I've seen presenters from the city, city present, school board meetings. We just want you to know that, you know, we strongly believe that with the McCleary decision and the funds that have been appropriated by the legislature, that we want our salaries to be competitive with our neighboring districts. We don't want to find ourselves in a situation where we're going, you know, we're still wondering why we come up short relative to our other districts. We don't want to leave, you know, at Lockburn Middle, if I can tell you firsthand, in 2015 to now, we've lost two-thirds of our staff. I've had a lot of, and that includes administrators, constant turnover. So we want to, if I could put a finger in the dam and kind of slow that down, that's kind of what we all want. We want teachers to stick out here, be experienced teachers, and stay here. So, I was going to make an action request review, it's just that if you could, A, just inform you, but B, also to let you know that as, we want, hope what you want, and that's a good quality of schools, with quality teachers, sticking around here and having a career, a great career in Clover Park District. Thank you.
That's all the people who signed up to speak at public comment, but that doesn't preclude you from speaking. If you wish to, please approach the podium at this time, and if there's more than one queue up, and when there isn't a line, we'll finish.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you for this time. To support Marty Harris, I'm Greg Kepner. I'm vice president for high schools from the Clover Park Education Association. Lakewood's a great place to live, no doubt about that. Great communities need great schools. They go hand in hand to bring people to our community. People don't say, you know, I want to move next to a mediocre school with some half-OK teachers. People want to live next to great schools. And, yeah, we have some problems in Clover Park with some schools that have challenges, but we also have some of the best schools in the nation. We've been reported out in national news media as such. Schools, their physical facilities, their brick and mortar, their people that come and go, but what makes great schools is great teachers. The legislature supported that when they fully funded the McCleary decision, giving tax money to support the state constitution, that the paramount duty of the state of Washington is to educate their students. The legislature put money into the Clover Park School District's budget with the intent that teachers be given a raise. We haven't been, we haven't had a cost of living raise in several years. In fact, the wages we make in comparison to what have gone down due to inflation and other pressures. What we're asking for is money the district already has in their budget, in their account right now. It will not raise taxes on any person in this community. We want to do this because we want to keep the great teachers here in Clover Park, as Marty said, the 25, 35-year teachers that come here right out of, right out of their bachelor program and stay here in Clover Park for an entire career, building the relationships with the students that last lifetimes. Great communities need great schools. Great schools in turn build great communities. It's a symbiotic relationship. Thank you for your time this afternoon, this evening.
Please step up.
Hi, my name is Miriam Robinson, and I teach at Woodbrook Middle School, and I didn't plan on speaking, but I got really fired up after hearing some of the comments. One thing I wanted to say is that we do know how to keep good teachers in our district, and that is to pay us more. It's the number-one thing that causes teachers to leave across the nation, is if there is a pay increase, they will leave. Same with administrators. And it's not a mystery, it's actually very obvious, so I wanted to make sure that that's said. Secondly, we do have schools that are showing results. Woodbrook is one of them. We do a lot of great work at Woodbrook, and I'm really proud of the data that we have. And we've actually won several awards from the state of Washington, not the state of Washington, the Center for Educational Effectiveness, and I've even spoken with some of the people that work there, and they've complimented us and congratulated us for the hard work that we do. Unfortunately, that's not really being recognized right now financially, and I would say just verbally from the district. I've spoken before at the school board meetings and said, can you guys, you know, recognize this hard work? We're working, you know, because, to make a difference, and we want to hear it from you. I've only been teaching 11 years, but I'm actually one of the most senior teachers at my school and in the district, and I think that's a shame. I think we need to keep the people that have been here, and I think we need to attract new people. I'm really passionate about my work, and I don't want to leave this district. I would like to stay here. But if push comes to shove, I live in Stilicon, they just got a great raise, it would just make sense for me to stay in Stilicon. Anything else I want to say? I feel like no one gets into education for the money, but we're really in a struggle situation. Many of us have huge student loans, many of us are the only income providers for our family. There are just very real issues that would cause us to leave. Thank you for your time.
Next, please.
Hello, I'm Dr. Kiara Ratcliffe. I live down the street in Lakewood. My doctorate is in teacher leadership relative to this. I just wanted to comment, I've been in our district for three years. I teach French at Clover Park High School, and, yeah, we have some very, some students with challenges, and it is wonderful, the job we're doing. As a relatively new face coming into the building, things are going very well with these kids that have challenges. I don't know if you hear that, let me tell you. Something related to this pay thing is, we get a lot of new teachers in there. Now, I've been teaching 13 years, and I'm a little over 40, okay? So I also have taught other things, children's choirs, I'm one of those teachers. We get young people in that are fired up and ready to help kids who really need some help, and they're struggling financially, and the combination of that and, say, a new person comes in my room to the right, my room to the left, and I help them. in my room to the right, my room to the left, and I help them and then one's gone. And then this one that's remaining is still a relatively new teacher and doesn't know who to ask anything. And this is a real snowball. I myself worked in Puyallup for several years and they, they rule at onboarding teachers. They are great. One of the problems onboarding teachers in our district and keeping the young ones so they can get real momentum is that the lack of stability doesn't allow them to settle in and get that traction. I, I hope I'm putting that clearly. So we're doing fabulous things. I can't stand hearing people say that we don't care. Not only do we care, we're teaching them to think. We're all over it. Look at them, they're great. We've got a school full of serious deserving talent over there. Anyway, thank you very much.
Seeing no one else queued up for public comment, I declare public comment closed. We now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of July 16, 2018. B, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of July 23, 2018. C, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $2,540,487.85 for the period of June 16, 2018 through July 15, 2018. D, approval of claim vouchers in the amount of $1,852,929.86 for the period of June 15, 2018 through July 20, 2018. E, motion number 2018-38, reappointing Alan Hart to serve on the Public Safety Advisory Committee through August 6, 2021. F, motion number 2018-39, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement with Clover Park School District for the purchase of fuel for the period of September 1, 2018 through August 31, 2019. G, ordinance number 691, granting MCI Metro Access Transmission Services Corp., a non-exclusive franchise for the construction, operations, maintenance, repair and removal of telecommunications services through, over and under the rights of way in the city. H, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, planning commission meeting minutes of June 20, 2018. And two, landmarks and heritage advisory board meeting minutes of June 28, 2018.
Thank you. Is there any item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Hearing that, I entertain a motion. Moved by Mr. Whalen, seconded by Ms. Moss that we adopt the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now move to the regular agenda.
Ordinance number 692, amending chapter 1.28 of the Lakewood Municipal Code relative to indemnification of city employees.
For this, we have Ms. Walker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Heidi Walker, City Attorney for the City of Lakewood. I'm coming back to you tonight after you've had an opportunity to consider the city's indemnification code. And what I attempted to do was show what my original proposed changed language was in response to some of the discussions we previously had, along with in red, the things that we discussed last time we met as a study session, which was the week before last. So I was trying to make sure that it was clear what was originally proposed and that I heard you and modified accordingly. So this is essentially a way to clarify what the city is doing with indemnification and ensure earlier notice to people who might be involved in litigation on behalf of the city. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Questions from Ms. Walker. Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Walker, I'm looking at page 94 of my packet where there is a section in red.
Yes.
And it speaks to that the city council must by resolution, after there's a judgment against an employee, consider and take action to pay that judgment on behalf of the employee. And earlier in the ordinance, it seemed that there are provisions of where we would make that decision much earlier, after an investigation and make a determination. And so I'm concerned that this indicates that earlier decisions are maybe not really to be relied upon because at this particular juncture, at the very end, where an employee is faced with a monetary judgment and we've determined that they were in the scope or that their duties are, it may have been gray, okay? But we decided that we were going to indemnify them. So why does this paragraph not say, the city will? Instead of saying that the city council has to pass a resolution in order to?
Well, Councilmember Branstadter, saying that you're going to pay something should it come to pass and actually moving the money when that action has come to pass are different things. And if this is not clear as to that, then it should be clarified. The upfront indemnification is saying, if the worst happens, the city will pay it. Now, we may fight that every step of the way through litigation, but throughout that process, the employee knows that the city has agreed to indemnify. At the end of that, at the end of the litigation, we don't always know how much that amount is going to be for, but we do know that the council is the one that makes the separation from the city coffers of that amount of money and that's the part that's done by resolution. So to the degree that that is not clear enough in here, it would need to be clarified. That investigation upfront is saying that we're accepting whatever comes. The part at the end is saying, when that judgment actually takes place, the judgment's done, it wouldn't matter what our investigation reveals, we move to make the actual coverage. If it's $5, if it's $500, if it's $5,000, whatever it may be, we by resolution address the payment.
So to understand that where the wording says, "The city council shall by resolution provide for the city's payment in full of such judgment," it's, it's more of an administrative action. It's not, this is not a point of where we're deciding whether to or not. It's...
Correct. It's the actual payment. It's writing the check, if you will.
And, and there's not really any discretion on the part of the council at this point?
Not at that point, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Whalen.
Just one Scrivener's error and then a question for clarification on our page 94, the red section at the top of the page. Second sentence, upon consideration of the particular facts. Need a "of" in there?
I live for the day. I don't get caught on a Scrivener's error. So "of" is appropriate in that sentence, yes.
Right. And then I was trying to figure out maybe a way where we could tie in that paragraph C with your prior paragraph B, in which you're indicating, in the middle sentence, "The city is directed by the city manager, shall conduct the investigation, the findings of which will be presented to the council for the determination of the punitive damage payout," right? And then in subsection C on this next page, I wonder if we couldn't say, "Upon consideration of the particular facts of the case, including the city manager's investigation," right? Because we want to kind of loop that in. Because I don't think we want a sui sponti, do our own investigation when we directed the city manager to do one. And it's that investigative sort of body of facts that should come to us for review and consideration, not something that we go out on a frog and deed to her to do, I think.
I would so agree with you about that.
Yeah.
So I think as you've indicated, that there needs to be a way that it specifically ties in. These A, B, and C all fall under determination of exclusion, but tying C to B would clarify it.
Yeah. It could be, "Upon consideration of the particular facts of the case, comma, as determined through the city manager's investigation, comma."
Yes, yes.
As provided above.
And so that would be upon the body to amend to include that phrase.
Yeah. That would be my thought. Again, just to kind of tie it together.
Any other questions? Entertained a motion? For a second. Been moved by Mr. Branstadter, seconded by, excuse me, Ms. Barth, to adopt ordinance number 692. May I offer an amendment? Mr. Whalen.
I would move to amend the motion on the table with the language on page, our page 94, subsection C, starting with the second sentence to state, "Upon consideration of the particular facts of the case, comma, as determined through the city manager's investigation, comma, the city council may also provide for the city's payment of any punitive damages stats has it stated there."
Is there a second to the amendment?
So seconded.
It's been moved by Mr. Whalen, seconded by Mr. Simpson, that we adopt the amendment as stated. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, I do have a question. So does that prevent the city council actually from making its own decision if it has to accept the, the determination by the city manager?
No, I don't think it does. The intent is that what the manager brings to you is what the investigation consisted of, what the facts found were, and what the conclusions drawn are. And the council from that makes a determination as to what the coverage may or may not be. Now, the council's also in a position to say, we don't feel like we have enough. We don't know why you didn't talk to this other city that happened to be there or this other witness or what have you, because you are the decision-making body and ultimately taking responsibility for that particular decision. But it's the manager that makes that determination about how to conduct the investigation, whether to send it out, whether to keep it in, large scale, small scale, all of those things. But ultimately, the council would have to accept it first and then pass on it.
Any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Now move to the motion as amended. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to adopt ordinance number 692 as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We want to move to unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There's none, Mayor.
Any new business to come before the council?
No, Mayor.
Move to report by the city manager, Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. I want to start off with a few items here that's listed on your agenda. The first is a review of our financial policies. I'd like to call up Todd Kraus, our Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer. The purpose of this update, we do this every two years, but really the major update here is a follow-up to an evaluation of our stormwater fund and our rates. The second update will be on our facility use policy. Then Mary Dodsworth, our Park and Recreation Director, would like to provide an update on that. What's driving that are two things. One is that we now have, the pavilion in the park is open and so we wanted to update our policies to accommodate that. But also, a review of the policies hadn't occurred in several years, so it was reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, so you have that before you this evening. And then the third item that also Ms. Dodsworth will be covering will be a request to enter into an agreement with the Beatrice Foundation for the city to provide $25,000 in support of a healthy nutrition program that a number of stakeholders are, are working on right now. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Kraus and then Ms. Dodsworth.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So as you recall, recently the city reviewed the city's surface water utility rates and as part of that study, a set of financial policy recommendations were considered and recommended. And as a result of that study, the city council approved a rate increase equivalent to 50% over the current rates for 2019 and 2.5% thereafter until 2024. The capital or the financial policy changes that I'll be proposing tonight were incorporated as part of that study and resulted in the rate changes. The first financial policy update is for operating reserves. We currently have 17% of operating revenues as the reserves for the utility and the recommendation is to increase that to 33%, which is equivalent to 120 days based on the revenue stream and how often we get it. We get it about twice a year for the ongoing swim fees. The second one, and actually the next three, we currently don't have in our financial policies. The second recommendation is to maintain a capital fund balance of 1% of the original system costs. The current policy does not include this. The capital reserves consists of cash that has been set aside for capital purposes. It could provide a source of emergency funding for unexpected asset failures or other unanticipated capital needs. It can also help the utility address cash flow issues related to capital projects. So for example, timing of the grants that we have for capital projects and also if there is a local match requirement on those grants. The capital reserve policy is not intended to guard against catastrophic system failure or extreme acts of natures and it is calculated at 1% of the original cost of the fixed assets. So that equates to almost $500,000. The next one is the debt service or debt reserve. And we have a set of debt policies, but they're more general. This one is specifically to the utility and that would be to establish and maintain a debt reserve if required as a condition of future debt issuance. Our utility currently doesn't have any debt, but should we have debt, this policy would apply. And then the last one that we were recommending is a system reinvestment funding. And this system reinvestment annually has been included in the rate increases and it would be based on the original cost depreciation. That original cost depreciation is about $1.3 million. And so really this is to take that into consideration and build it into the rates. So those are the four changes, one change and three additions to our financial policies. The proposed revised financial policies is expected to be presented to the city council for consideration on August 20. So that concludes my presentation.
Questions from Ms. Kraus. Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Kraus, I understand the genesis of the policy change was the, the study and then the action by the city council with respect to the stormwater management program. What other enterprise funds does the city have?
The surface water is the only enterprise fund the city has.
We don't have anything as relates, relates to sewers because we just do that and there's nothing else that is categorized as a, as an, as an enterprise fund amongst our different funds that we have.
That's correct.
Is there any potential for us to acquire new enterprise funds?
Um, not that I...
Is there, is there, is, what's the potential for the city to take some future actions that would create a new enterprise fund, such as some, something for, for roads or as we move to begin to do, create some of the new funding streams in the downtown, things like that? Would any of those become enterprise funds?
That's not something, I'm not aware of any additional enterprise funds or any creation of it. It is not something that we have discussed as part of a downtown redevelopment or any projects that is going on with the city. There are special criteria for establishing an enterprise fund, so we can't just create an enterprise fund if it doesn't meet very specific requirements in terms of the types of revenues and expenditures.
So generally, what are those?
An enterprise fund, off the top of my head, it's been a long time since I've looked at it, but there is a user fee and I think... And I think it has to be like at least 50% of the fund is funded by user fees would be one of the criteria.
Okay, because my concern was is that the policy is for, if we only have one, it's for all enterprise funds, and it's not a policy for the stormwater fund as it's stated. You know, and it seemed like the criteria that we're putting into policy are very unique to the stormwater utility. And if we were to ever look to do an enterprise fund of another nature, it could well be, have a very different structure in terms of being able to go and do that. But I guess we could address that at a at a future time if another enterprise fund was created, whether this policy now also fit or they needed to be separated out and have their own. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's correct.
Any other questions for Ms. Kraus? Mr. Bulkey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Ms. Kraus, I'm writing down here what you were saying on the different reserves. And then I'm looking towards the back in the work paper. Tell me, what's the total amount right now in your estimate? Because I have debt, we would have zero, because we wouldn't have reserve for it. Operating, it looks like it's 936. Capital? You're saying somewhere in the neighborhood of 480?
480 or so, yes. The total is about 1.5 million.
Okay, and so then the other one is similar, the system reinvestment one?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so about a little over half a year, really, is what we're talking about. You mentioned, what's our anticipated revenues next year in that fund?
It is currently 2.7, and I believe it goes up in 2019 to about 3.9. And the reason why it's not the numbers that we had projected earlier is because we have some phase in.
Okay, and then total, you're talking about, how much did you say?
It's about $950,000 for the 33% operating reserves, about $500,000 for the capital reserves. System reinvestment is about 1.3 million.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Kraus. Mr. Coffield?
I'll turn it over to Ms. Dodsworth for the next two items, Mayor.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm here to chat with you first about our facility use policy document. So the facility use policies are used basically to help make sure that we're clarifying issues or setting standards for consistency when our facilities are being used. Just in the last 20 years or since cityhood, you know, we've added parks, we've added a lot of facilities, we've added areas within parks, and so we just want to make sure that we're protecting the park side, making sure those folks who are coming to use our parks are having a safe and fun experience. And then those folks that are coming that aren't interested in a reserved space are also not being negatively impacted. So we spend a lot of time juggling a lot of different folks and a lot of different activities so that a lot of people wouldn't even notice that a million people are at the park every year, right? Because I think we do a pretty good job of trying to keep people in the right spots and making sure that they understand what the rules are so that they can, again, have a good experience. So we utilize this facility use policy primarily for staff, but we also share it with our users if they're interested. And again, it's just to have some consistent basis for scheduling and programming. So when we were looking at creating an operational plan or looking at how we're going to implement the business plan for the Pavilion as it's coming online, we went back and thought it would make more sense to incorporate any new use or any new rules or anything into our operational or into our facility use policy so that everything was there in one spot. We recognize that we really hadn't updated it for quite a bit of time. And again, this isn't a policy that council takes action on regularly. It's more of an administrative tool. But we really did a very thorough review. We found out that several things were repeated in there, so we did, if it was repeated in there, we tried to find the right spot for it and just include it once. And it's a pretty good document. We've been using it. I think we created it in 2003 when we started actually charging people to rent picnic shelters and things. So we've really done more addition to the document. You can see those areas that are underlying. Some of the changes are quite simple. It might be a title or that we're calling something differently now than maybe we called it a few years ago. And then also added some things like consistent questions that we get from folks that we wanted to just make sure everybody was on the same page and answering the questions correctly. So as you can see, some of the things that we also added to the document are some of our city codes. We do use the Lakewood Municipal Code as the rules that we follow, the laws that we require. So we did include those in some areas because some folks, you know, ask us, is alcohol allowed in parks? Can we smoke in parks? What are some of the things that you consider when doing a special use permit? We've spent a lot of time having a process that's really a good, fair, consistent process, so everybody's treated equally. Regardless if you are a brand-new event or you've been an event here for 10 or 15 years. So we try and gather a lot of information so that we can make sure that we have, again, safe activities, that we know who's coming, when they're coming, how many are coming, where they're going to be, where they're going to park, how they're going to access the area, what kinds of activities they're doing. We want to make sure that from the city's liability as well, that we're making sure we're looking at all those things. What's your incident action plan? What's your emergency plan? What's your parking plan? We spend a lot of time, from small to large events, to make sure that those things are handled well, and I think the city's done well with that program. So you can see we've added some of those things, like our city code, or we've expanded on a topic. You can see those areas underlined. So we did clarify things again from our code on sound and amplification, of course, with the Pavilion there. When it's a city concert or it's a community event, concert, there's a little bit of leeway on your noise ordinance. Not so much in hours, because we still stick with our noise ordinance hours. But maybe you can hear it from further than 20 feet for maybe a concert in the park, or if we're going to do a big festival or something. So we added some of those things as well. We added a little bit about, you know, pushpins and nails and duct tape, all those things that can damage property, as well as signage for your event. You may want to put up a sign that says, you know, come over here for the the Anderson Family Reunion, or the Target Family Picnic, just so people know where to go. The other thing that we've done is added some use zones, and you can see that on your last page, 139. One of the things that we found is, is that once all the picnic shelters were rented, people still wanted their own space to do their activity. And so we rent them a plot of land. No tables, no shelter, really not much, but they did have their own space for their activity. And so one of the things that we did was, as we've added these new shelters at the park and added the Pavilion, and had, we have some really kind of designated open space areas where you can do events and there's power and water and things. We created use zones, and we found that that will help us manage our folks. So the zones will accommodate a certain number of people, so if you have 500 people, you're not going to fit in the shelter by the park, by the playground. But maybe we're going to move you over to the, we call it the kids' zone area. But also, it'll give you sort of an area if you utilize a space so that you know how much space you have and how far you can go, so you don't impact another group that's there. It allows us, again, to make multiple use of a facility that we have that can generate some economic impact for the community and offset our operations. So are there any specific questions about this? I don't know, you've seen this before, maybe previously, but it is a document that we use on a regular basis. When we have a new staff person come in, you know, they're utilizing that on a very regular basis to make sure that, again, everybody's treated fairly and consistently and in the city.
Questions for Ms. Dodsworth? Mr. Branstad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Dodsworth, I'm looking on page 134 of our packet. And it seems to be under responsibilities of the user and applicant. And there's a paragraph six which has to do with signs. And it seems to go about how they can be constructed and where they can be put up. But the last sentence says, "Any temporary signage must be approved by the facility staff and immediately removed following the end of the rental." What's the criteria for approval or disapproval?
For approval of any kind of signage?
In this thing here, if someone has an event, they have to present a sign for approval or disapproval, or a picture of a sign or a site plan.
Well, typically, that's a trigger so that we can talk to people about how they're using the facility, what areas they're going to be using. Do we have signage that they may be able to use that can direct people? What signage are they thinking of putting up? So again, it's just having a, an opportunity to start a conversation. If someone was to bring a sign out that we thought was particularly offensive in a family-friendly environment, we may ask them to move that or change that. But these are, these are all inside the park. They're not in the right-of-way, so they're really not connected specifically to our park code or to the, to the new sign code that I think you're going to be working on as well.
I guess I'm not certain that I see the difference of we can have content-related rules for signs in parks of where we are providing people public access. And the changes we're making in the sign code that are not always logical, okay, but are going to bending over backwards to say we won't make any decisions about signs that are based on having to read them.
Not a question.
So I guess, I guess it seems that we're making a distinction between signs in parks and signs everywhere else in the city?
Councilmember Branstad, that will not be the case. We're going to follow what the Supreme Court has told us we have to do with signs. Thank you.
So is that sentence actually viable?
We in the Parks Department will have a conversation about that and make sure that everybody's on the same page about full compliance with Reed versus Gilbert. And the Parks Department has been very good about always running those things by us as they get to the closing lap around the track on these things.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. Dodsworth on this issue? And we'll move to the Beechers Foundation Pure Food Kids Workshop contract.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dod, are we, are we moving on to Beechers now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Unless you have something additional to offer, I thought you were
Yes, thank you. So so we have a mission in Parks and Recreation to create a healthy and vibrant community. And I think that we've been trying to focus a lot of our activities and events and programs in that direction. And we all know healthy communities need healthy citizens. And we've found there's a lot of research that says it starts with food. So Beechers approached the city regarding a program that they've been running for over 10 years, primarily in King County. They've been doing it in like 26 different schools. They've served over 125,000 children. And teaching this program, nutrition awareness, and they've been very successful in doing it. And so they are interested in now in bringing that program to Pierce County. And because of our health-related, especially income-related health disparities, I mean, Pierce County is number one. I mean, we're number one in a lot of things that aren't necessarily positive when it comes to health. So they're looking at bringing that program to Pierce County, and they want to bring it to Lakewood. And so they've been working for the last three months to talk about how that might work. And I think they've been completely overwhelmed with, in a positive way, with the level of collaboration and enthusiasm and commitment to teaching these kids. So I've got a quick little video that we're going to show you, and then I'll talk a little bit more specifically about the program.
I consume 120 pounds of refined sugar a year, and I don't even realize it.
I will eat over 100 additives and chemicals today that I can't even pronounce.
I read somewhere that chicken is always a healthy choice.
Who thought I could lose weight by eating a candy bar? I mean, a protein bar.
This is the American diet.
My diet makes me a high risk for stroke and heart disease.
These are your friends.
I wonder why I get a headache after I run.
Your neighbors.
My doctor says I'm prediabetic, so that makes me not diabetic. Right?
And your children.
My generation could have a shorter life expectancy than my parents.
What the food?
Simply put, the food we eat is slowly killing us, unleashing an epidemic of obesity, diabetes, heart disease, cancer, and more. Consider this: Some 680,000 people will die from diet-caused illnesses this year. That's nearly 50% more than the number of tobacco-related deaths. Our nation spends over $500 billion a year to treat diet-related illnesses, costing employers millions of lost work hours due to absenteeism and lack of productivity. Every day, countless individuals suffer a range of diet-based ailments, from headaches to depression to chronic indigestion. We are all affected, especially low-income communities. An unholy trinity of overly-processed, heavily-sugared, additive-laden food is creating a population that is increasingly overfed but undernourished. Clearly, we have a problem, but fortunately, there's a solution. We have the power individually and collectively to change our food system, right here, right now, in Western Washington. We call it the Sound Food Uprising, a grassroots social movement to change how Puget Sound eats. A 10-year campaign to dramatically improve the health of our region by educating all who live here about food and cooking. Spearheaded by the Beechers Foundation, Sound Food Uprising is a powerful and growing coalition of companies, community organizations, and all people from all walks of life, ready to challenge the way food is manufactured, distributed, and deceptively marketed. It starts with workshops in schools, in the workplace, and in our communities, revealing the problems and consequences of our unhealthy food system. Inspiring participants to eat smarter, set personal and family goals, and share what they've learned. There's even engaging hands-on teaching about how to cook tasty nutritious meals conveniently and economically. Our goal is audacious but attainable. We will change the food supply by changing the demand, by voting with our dollars for better food in our homes, schools, stores, and restaurants. It won't happen overnight, but day by day, purchase by purchase, meal by meal, we can chip away at the unholy trinity, creating a region, then a nation, where it's easier for everyone to eat well and affordably. The Puget Sound Region has transformed the world with our products, our services, our art, our ideas, and our perseverance. Sound Food Uprising is harnessing the same energy and innovation for our health and well-being. Together, we can make a difference. Together, we can change the lives of millions of people. Together, we can create a healthier, happier, and more productive society. Join the Sound Food Uprising today and change our food system for better and forever.
So at the beginning of the video, some of those comments would almost be comical if they weren't true. And, and sometimes it kind of catches you off guard. Sometimes it makes you laugh. But it is true that, you know, if we can teach our kids about proper nutrition and make them become food detectives in a fun environment, teach them how to cook and how you can use simple ingredients, whether you're getting the food from the food bank, you're buying it from the mini-mart, because they also identify that some of these families are in food deserts. They don't have grocery stores in their, in their area, like, say, Springbrook area. And that there's ways that they can utilize the resources that are available to them economically and in a healthy way. So again, they've had great success doing this throughout King County. They are looking at expanding it a bit, not just teaching the kids, which their plan is to work with the, we've got the schools, Tai Park Elementary, Lakewood Hope Academy, and the Clover Park High School. So they're working with youth, elementary school kids, middle school kids, and high school kids. And they're also going to do an additional program with the parents, the families, and that's the partnering with the Boys and Girls Club. They have a great facility. So they're going to be teaching these classes to the families so that everybody can be on the same page and that they can do this together. So they've got a great team starting out. They've got the core sort of people. They've got the Beechers Foundation, of course, which it seems kind of monumental that you're going to change the world in 10 years or maybe change the Northwest. But the Northwest is known for being advocates for change, being advocates for health. We've done, they kind of followed the path. They were, I was at a meeting, you know, Lake Washington was a completely polluted lake that nobody could even boat and swim in. was a completely polluted lake that nobody could even boat and swim in. And because of small changes over a 20-year period, it's become a healthier environment. And they're looking at that same kind of thing for our neighborhoods. So they've got the Health Department, who of course has a lot of data, and there'll be data collection, so it won't just be running a program, they're going to be actually collecting data and looking at change, looking at buying patterns in grocery stores. They've done surveys to find out where the folks that live in these areas, where they shop, so that they connect to those owners and to those corporations and get data so that they can see if this is making an impact and a difference. They, of course, are working with Clover Park School District, that's where the kids are, and so they've been really open to having this program come into the classroom, and they can tie it into the learning curriculum and the criteria that they have already set as part of their school district. They're working with the Tacoma Rainiers is a big part of this, of course, that's incentives and other enthusiastic ways of getting the kids excited, bringing rhubarb in for a cooking day or something like that. And then, of course, the Lakewood Boys and Girls Club, who is excited, they've got kids, they've got families, they've got facilities, and they're interested in being a partner as well. So they're looking at the program costing a bit over about $200,000. If they can get more kids and more resources, they can do more programs, but this is sort of the basic program that they're going to provide for a year. They're looking at 25,000 from the City of Lakewood to reach about 625 students and over 1,000 adults for these workshops. And they're looking at wanting to get started in October and to be done by the end of the school year, so that's what they're looking at. And I can answer any questions that you have as much as I have. I actually did attend, and a couple of the people on the team attended a cooking class, they gave us an example of how it works, and it's very interactive, it's fun. I learned a lot, didn't cut my hand, that was a win. My knife skills are a little shaky sometimes.
Before questions, I have some sort of private authorship in this, having Marion the staff into this. This is a beta test for an expanded program. The one that was described was essentially grade school only, almost a hit-and-run type deal, although it has been very well-received and is sustained by the Beecher Foundation. The expansion here is trying to hit three levels, as Mary indicated, instead of one, where you hit younger high school age, that kind of depends on the curriculum of the district and how they can fit it in, and the parents, which is extremely important. Also, reaching out into the community in order to find a sustainable source of the necessary ingredients. One of my daughters used to sell to Dollar General, one of the discount stores that has foods in the southeast, and a large international food company she worked for would actually time orders and deliveries to match the food stamp loading on the EBT cards for frozen pizza, which is a staple for people who don't know how to cook and are looking for cheap food. It's kind of at the core of the problem. This takes basic ingredients, basic spices, and basic tools, and puts them together with education, and a source, whether it's a cooperating grocery store, the Emergency Food Network and the like, to create a sustainable system. And it just so happens that one of the first things that happened in this branch out was to recruit somebody named Helen McGovern to help drive this in her now-retirement. And so Helen is the one that has brought a number of the private contributors in, because she knows every major contributor in Pierce County, and has also been pretty enthusiastic about the healthy foods aspect of it. So I think it's a great opportunity at an eight-to-ten-to-one leverage, because the Beechers thing doesn't, there's actually indirect subsidy of this. This happens to be kind of the baby of Kurt Dammeyer, who's been a layman's Beecher, Beechers Cheese, has restaurants, his social mission. And he wanted to do something, Kurt's a high grad, he wanted to do something in Pierce County, and said, hey, you in Lakewood, I think you have a demographic, and we actually moved it to make it workable. But the health outcomes is shown by the Health Department from the, just if you look at the Springbrook side of the I-5 to this side of I-5 are dramatically different, and they're very, very strongly linked to diet. So... What's the skin in the game of the school district? The school district is access, and this is one of the first instances in which Clover Park School District has opened up to the outside and modified their curriculum and time to allow access. Most districts, they go to the teacher, they get direct access from the teacher. Here, it's from the top down, and that barrier was penetrated. So it's hoped that if the beta test is successful, and they do have ways of gathering data on it, that the foundation funding with the participation of the Beecher Foundation will continue. So Ms. Doddsworth's been the person in the trenches getting this up and running, so...
Besides the funding resource that they've requested, our role has really been as a liaison, a connector, finding partners, finding out where the gaps are, you know, we're pretty good at problem-solving, and with our connection through the collaboration and just all of our relationships in the community, we've been able to provide support. When they're looking at this, and we've suggested this or this, or come up with some different ideas, every time we have a meeting of the team of different folks, more people are at the table, and more problems are being solved, and they're kind of just shaking their head, like, it doesn't work like this everywhere else. And it's like, I just keep saying, this is how we do it in Lakewood. You know, you bring everybody together and you try and make it work, and be as successful as you can with the resources that you have. And I think that we've, again, represented our community well in the county setting with a lot of different folks. And when everybody's around the table saying, yes, we can make this happen, we can help here, we can get you through this door, we can introduce you to this person, have you talked to this person, it's hard for someone to sit there and say, well, I don't really want to play. They're all at the table wanting to do what they can, everybody's got a different resource. And so it's been a good process, again, showing our community how well we work together, and we get stuff done.
It's also, I think, an indirect benefit is our opportunity to positively collaborate with the school district. They have essentially cooking classes, that's what Mary was talking about, so maybe we can plug some council members into...
Oh, they would love to have you come down and participate in some way. It's really interesting, and again, they divide everybody up, and everybody has a different role and gets to participate. There's always education, there's always hands-on, and then you get to eat. And so it's always fun at the end when you get to eat, it's kind of like home ec., you know, at the end, you got to eat the meal. But it's good, and again, it's that, and we're not providing incentives, of course, because that's not our role as a city, but some of the partners can come together, whereas if you come to this program and you get a cutting board and a real knife, and then you talk about how like my best saucepan came from Goodwill, you know, that there's places you can get these resources that doesn't cost a lot of money, and you can be successful, so...
There are no other questions, thank you.
And I was going to, this is going to be on for action on the 20th, I think is the next Monday meeting, so if we could put it on the consent agenda, if that's easy, or if you'd like to have another, any more information, we can do that.
Consent agenda's fine.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Coffey.
Thank you, Mayor. Got a few more updates. Tomorrow is National Night Out, tomorrow evening, and I know we got a couple of council members signed up to do some ride-alongs. If anybody else is interested in hooking up with one of our police officers, please let me know, and we'll be more than happy to schedule that for you. I think as we have previously reported, the Library Board of Trustees recently took action to place on the November ballot a levy lid lift to continue their maintenance and operations, to increase their maintenance and operations levy from 42 cents per thousand all the way up to their maximum levy of 50 cents. They haven't had a levy increase in 12 years. And so my question for this body is, would you like to consider a resolution either supporting or not supporting that ballot measure? And if so, we can get that docketed in the September timeframe, you have to go through, you know, a public hearing and things along those lines. You have done that in the past with other initiatives, whether it's been MNO levies or capital bonds, for example, schools and fire. And I do know the Library District has requested this body to consider a resolution supporting the levy, but I will leave that to you if that's something that you wish to pursue. And maybe we can talk about it at your next meeting.
Yeah, I think we're very interested in the bond, and I personally have some concerns about the mission creep of library into the social program mode, and their reluctance to try to assist their neighbors with respect to transient population using library property. And if we're going to cooperate with them, I think we have to set some parameters for any joint use. So I think that we need to discuss that before we just, my personal opinion, I'm one of seven.
What do you agree with that?
So it's two of seven.
I mean, it's horrible. It's embarrassing.
I think given that we have been dogging them for several years about trying to get, build a new, like, a new library in Lakewood, and the importance of that to us, I would argue that we should support the levy, because I don't see that the bond issue going forward without the levy. So, you know, I just don't know what our expectation should be if we don't, if the levy fails and we don't support it, but anyway. Mr. Branstadter.
Yes, I would agree with Mr. Bokey. I think that where we want to get to is we want to get to the point of where the library is putting forth a bond issue to fund our new facilities that are going to be catalyst sites in our community. And I can see from their point of view of where they maybe need to do this first, if that's what they're thinking. And I would certainly like to see this pass the first time, as opposed to deciding, well, we have to do this in another year, and we got to push a capital bond out a year until we can get this to happen. I may be willing to talk with them as to whether they need to move all the way from 42 to 50, okay, you know, and just go to the maximum, because although they haven't had an increase in, you know, 12 years, that, you know, the assessment base and that, and I'm not quite sure if they're, like the school district of where their operations levy is a fixed amount, or whether it's a rate. If it's a rate, it's not that it's been static, it's just that the rate hasn't moved up ahead, or if they're in the same situation as us with profit taxes, of where they've just been on a 1% because of something, and this is a levy lid lift, just one time and then back onto the 1% piece. So I would like a little bit more information, but I'm inclined to want to support this in furtherance of the partnership that we really need and that is tied into our strategic plan.
So perhaps bring this back for a study session, review with, and get a presentation from the library. Councilmember Branstadter's comment regarding the financials of the library is spot-on. So just like the city, they levy a dollar amount every year, and it grows by 1%, and then that's applied to the AV. And so what's happened over time is that their levy rate has decreased from 50%, and now it's at 42%. And so what they're doing is they're asking the voters to increase it up to 50 cents to be able to capture that delta, to be able to take into account the cost of doing business essentially the last 12 years. So it's a one-time levy lid lift, and, but we can have them in here to give you a presentation on how the mechanics of their finances are and how they work.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Council. On the city front, there's some things that are, a lot of moving parts right now. Complain Amendment process kicked off recently, and so private property amendments are due by September 17th. Likewise, our 1% for Human Services of the General Fund, that process opened up in July, and the deadline for providers to be able to provide for funding for 2019 and 2020 is August 26th. Likewise, we kicked off and opened the application process last Wednesday, August 1st, for lodging tax funding for 2019, and that closes on Monday, close of business, 5:00 p.m. on August, 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 August 20th. So kind of a lot of things happening there as we look out into the near future. Also, we provided a couple of letters to some jurisdictions. One was Pierce Transit requested a letter of support for a bus and bus facilities grant that they had submitted to the FTA, and it calls for the expansion of their facilities over in Lakewood here, is my understanding. So it's kind of a last-minute request. Given our relationship with them, we went ahead and provided them a letter that went to the FTA, and we'll make sure that you get a copy of that. Likewise, I think I had previously mentioned, the federal government is in the process of considering a bill called the Streamline Act that would essentially unserp local authority as it relates to the deployment of small cell facilities. And so we have sent a letter opposing that to both Senators Cantwell and Senator Murray, expressing our concern with that. And we're not the only city that has done that. National Leagues of City at the national level has done it, Association of Washington Cities, and I know a number of individual cities like Lakewood has done that as well. So we sent that out last week as well. Earlier in the evening, it was mentioned, I think the mayor mentioned, that the Clover Park School District provided, I have to tell you, a very well-written letter regarding their concern with Amtrak. And I just want to publicly thank the school district and the board for doing that. Also, you all may recall certainly better than I, but they also attached a copy of a resolution going back to 2010, opposing Amtrak coming screaming through our community at 7:00 at grade crossings at 79 miles an hour. And so that was also beneficial, that this is not something that's new, this is something that our community for a good number of years has opposed. The Concerts in the Park kick off a week from Tuesday on the 14th, and I think we'll send you, Mary and her team did a wonderful job putting out a nice little pamphlet promoting that. Also, we have moved the official ribbon-cutting of the pavilion in the park, given that there's still a bit of a punch list on the project itself, and maybe some landscaping improvements that need to occur. So we would like to do that as part of Truck and Tractor Day on October 13th. And so that will be the official ribbon-cutting ceremony, and the kissing of the babies, and things along those lines, and then we'll have a nice plaque that we'll be able to unveil as well. So I just wanted to alert the mayor and the council to that. We continue to have dialogue and good discussion with JBLM regarding a potential land swap. They have identified 100 acres essentially adjacent to the city out off of the Woodbrook neighborhood. However, we have identified some challenges with that property. One is that there is a lake that sits in the middle of it, measuring at least 20 acres, better defined as a category 2 in some instances, a category 3 wetland, which would require at least 200-foot buffers. So it's really not 100 acres. And then on top of that, there are issues with squirrels, and then there are issues... I can't, please, please stop... with squirrels, and then there are issues, I can't, please, please stop smiling. I can't, you gotta, I can try to maintain a straight face on this. And you're all not helping. Squirrels and oak trees and other little critters out there. So it's not to say that, that it's a hundred acres that can't be developed. I'm saying that it's less than a hundred acres. However, we are working with JBLM to potentially identify some other property adjacent to Lakewood that would serve the same or a similar purpose. So we are not quite done there. But I wanted to give council a heads up that there are some environmental concerns with the hundred acres that, that, that have been identified. Next week on your agenda, we have placed the review of a resolution that Pierce County Council has asked not just the Lakewood Council, but all councils in Pierce County to consider, which is to support some recent amendments that they have made to the countywide planning policies. I could tell you that our recommendation is you should support those amendments offhand. I can't remember what they are. One of them relates to sewers and the other relates to annexations. But they're good ones. They're good ones, and they're ones that you should support. However, at the same time, we would like to recommend that the council consider an accompanying resolution expressing the city of Lakewood's support for some things that we want to keep on the front radar here. One of them is the, you know, the, the fact is, is that pulling away from PSRC and forming our own NPO, and let's not let folks consider, or let's not have folks in Pierce County forget that. That is something that we put a lot of energy and effort into about a year ago, and we want to make sure that it continues to have some life there. The other is the issue of sewers. The county has done a fantastic job in how they're delivering sewer services, particularly from a development services process. They're in the process of kicking off or have initiated a review of their unified sewer plan. All city, oh, cities that are part of their service area have been invited to the table, including Lakewood. And what we would like to propose to the county council is that they also change the, the business acumen of, of how they own and operate the sewer utility. Right now, they, it's kind of a laissez-faire approach. They, the system expands when somebody wants to connect into it. Our preference would be like how most utilities operate, which is to grow the system and for them to take a more proactive approach in, in, in extending sewers. And for example, as it relates to Lakewood, out in Tillicum and even Woodbrook, but mostly Tillicum, there's, there's about ten projects out there. Let's take out the city of Lakewood. I understand that, you know, when that was first set up, that was a good, you know, middle ground between the city and the county. Perhaps it's time for us to turn that over all to the county. They can get that done a whole lot quicker, cheaper, and more efficiently than, quite frankly, you know, the city can. So that's a second item we'd like to include in the resolution. And then the third is that the city of Lakewood's population is not going to be going to ninety-five thousand. And I think we all know the story there from a couple of years ago. And so also, the other, the other audience of this resolution would be the Pierce County Regional Council, and potentially having these as items of discussion for PCRC. So we would like to bring that forward as part of your next study session, and at least have a, have a, have a discussion and a, and a, and a dialogue on that. Last fall, you might recall, some private property owners came in regarding Carp Lake. We have met with them a couple of times. We had provided them some advice and some structure on what they needed to do. The good news is that apparently somebody has stepped up. I know several people in the past have tried, but an individual has stepped up and she's looking to form some kind of a lake district out there, similar to what's happened on Lake Louise and Lake Tillicum and Gravely Lake and some other areas here in, in the city. She's also working with an attorney who helped form the Lake Louise District, and is actually also working with the person that does the lake treatment application on both Lake Louise and Lake Tillicum and Lake Gravely, as a matter of fact, Gravely Lake as well. So it looks like some progress is beginning to be made in, in, in that area as well. Of course, the city is, you know, serving as a resource. And once that forms up, we can work with them to help apply for grants with the Department of Ecology and create a partnership there, similar to, again, that we have on Gravely Lake, Lake Tillicum, and, 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 and Lake Louise. I also wanted to mention regarding LTAC, you know, lodging tax dollars, you know, the city will be applying for its, you know, funding of programs, you know, some of these, you know, the same as in the past, you know, Summer Fest, Farmer's Market, something new, the Summer Concert Series out at, out at Fort Tillicum Park. Also, perhaps some capital requests in support of Fort Tillicum Park, you know, Angle Lane, and maybe some bathrooms and parking lot improvements. Harry Todd Park, we're looking at that as a potential option. Continuation of funding in support of the gateway specifically at Far West and Silicon Boulevard. Also, helping out the Arts Commission with funding in support of their international film festival, and then continuation funding on, on some media promotion. So that's, that's kind of where, where, where we are, where we are with that. Then, I mentioned as it relates to your calendar, National Night Out, which is tomorrow evening. May have run into Phil Raski recently, and so the, the annual Lakewood Film, Art, and Book Fest are now called Fab, previously known as the Asian Film Festival, will be on September twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth, and it'll be over at the McGavick Center this year. Very significant expansion from what they've done in the past. So please, you know, book your calendars for there. October thirteenth, I mentioned, is Truck and Tractor Day. And then we're, we're, we're trying to look for the right weekend to do the fall community cleanup. And based on everything that's happening in October, we're looking at November third and fourth. So that's a week later than last year. But I think that would be a good time in terms of people being able to clean out their, 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 their private properties. So with that, Mayor, I know it was a long one, that's my report.
Questions for Mr. Ben Coffield.
Ms. Moss.
Going so long, I forgot how to turn me off.
One more. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Coffield, you were talking about the projects and that. One of the public comments tonight, maybe, was about the Lakewood Drive. That project is on our list, is, is still in, in, going to happen?
Which project?
Lakewood Drive, potholes and the road.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah. Matter of fact, they, they expect a great break ground here in the next few weeks or so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Coffield.
I'm sorry, I have one more.
We don't have an answer for you.
Do I have time? Do I have, the sun's still up?
Go ahead.
It relates to Fort Tillicum Park and the transfer of Fort Tillicum Park to both Pierce College and the city. So our team continues to, and Pierce College, continue to meet and discuss this with both DSHS and Department of Enterprise Services, which is taking the business lead on this. One of the items and the issues is the, the well, the water rights. So our position is that, yeah, as goes the property, as goes the water rate. So we think we're almost there with the state. However, we have also brought in the Lakewood Water District because they have an interest in accessing that water. For about a millisecond, our idea was to form a water utility and then sell them the water. You know, they buy water from various sources. However, we have a non-compete agreement with the Lakewood Water District, so we can't do that. However, the Lakewood Water District is interested in perhaps contracting with us to run it, and then we would sell it back to them, which would generate some funding for, you know, our, 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 our general fund. So more to follow on that. But right now, certainly the city and Pierce College and the Lakewood Water District are all working together, along with DSHS and Department of Enterprise Services. And we hope that we get this wrapped up by the end of the year. That's our goal.
All right. We'll move to council comments. Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any comments other than to say thank you all very much for the card. It's very nice. It means a lot. Thank you.
Mr. Bulkey.
Just a couple of comments. Really looking forward to National Night Out, and all the other events here on the next few Tuesdays. And I believe Councilmember Richardson in the sixth district has moved his in district to the gathering spot on Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. Is that, have we set that date?
The gathering spot?
Yes. I, I believe he's, they're having two meetings at, that week, one on the twenty-eighth and one on the twenty-ninth. And I believe the gathering spot is where they're going to have it. That's what I heard, anyway.
Mr. Branstadter. We'll give him a discount.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Commission met Wednesday of last week, and they have moved on from the downtown plan to the sign code, you know, are, so, working their way through that with, with questions and of, of trying to understand and, and also to trying to make that the product of the code understandable in format and, and content. But Shannon Kelly-Fong made a presentation to the Planning Commission regarding the city's dashboard development process. And that's been something that we have been, as a part of wanting certain decisions and that to be data-driven. And we have written into the strategic plan and have asked for a while to, to get some momentum on there being city dashboards as a part of transparency. And I would say that in keeping with the thoroughness of the rest of the work that has been assigned to her, there is an actual prototype, beta project of a rather comprehensive set of dashboard elements that cover all of our council priorities and across the departments. And I think hopefully shortly, we'll also get a presentation of where that work is. The strategic plan called for much of that dashboard work to begin in 2018, to come to fruition in 2019 and, 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 and twenty. And I was encouraged that we're on track with the timelines that are spelled out in the strategic plan, that there is, I think there's also some room for, for some input of things that we would like to see in the dashboard, and that the, the dashboard is right now primarily filled with things that staff felt that they needed to provide data-driven results for their work. And it's a little less driven by what does the community want to be able to see about how well the city is running. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Barth.
I too am looking forward to National Night Out tomorrow. And I hope it's as fun as it is every year. I enjoyed the refreshing school board update today, and look forward to the graduation rates and hearing what those are. I really think that the emphasis needs to be on the data. And I think that we finally got that across. So it's nice.
Mr. Simpson.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Whalen.
There we go. Just to follow up on the Arts Commission meeting tonight, as the city manager indicated, they have that big event that they're working on for September twenty-eighth through thirtieth at McGavick Center. It's going to be a big deal. So this has grown dramatically to the point where they're having forty-four different literary authors coming to this event. There'll be book signings and presentations, along with the, the film and the art. So please try to go to one of the days and enjoy it. They put a ton of time into this thing, and are looking forward to, you know, the Summer Concert Series and participating in that, not just this summer, but for next year. So they're, they're really a vibrant group. It's probably the most vibrant. I've seen them in eight years that I've been doing this. They've got good leadership. They've got people who are excited and engaged. So the more we can give them to do, the more they'll perform. And other than, I think I sent you all, in one of my crankier moments, a photograph this last week of really an unacceptable nuisance in the town center. And, you know, we've seen a bunch of them, and staff is doing a great job with the code enforcement and the abatement program that we have. But it just smacks me as somewhat ironic that we spend all this time, lots of effort, lots of resources, talking about the downtown sub-area planning process. And we really need to work on the low-hanging fruit. And the low-hanging fruit to me is those damn derelict buildings in the center of our town. And we have got to do a better job of getting that crap cleaned up. Because the problem is you've got an attractive nuisance. It's not just the derelict building, it's the dump site that it becomes. And then it's the miscreants who kind of roll and crawl in and out of the windows and go to neighboring businesses like the Lakewood Dental Building. And they have video of people taking a dump on the front steps of the building and smear it all over the windows. That stuff likely wouldn't happen if there wasn't junk and attractive nuisances next door. So I don't know what it takes to change process, or to enhance the finding, or to get a hand around the neck of the absentee landlords that allow this to happen. But we have to do a better job, or we're going to lose more businesses in the town center. And people are going to question, why invest here? Who the heck cares about a sub-area plan if we can't get the little things right? So that's my problem. That's it today.
A redux of your crankier moments.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
But I agree with you. I, I, I think we, in the budget process, we need to seriously look at enhancing the resources that we focus on, nuisances and code enforcement. It's necessary, it's popular, and I think it's, we get a lot of bang for our buck. So...
Exactly. It's canceled, that one's happened.
So I, I look forward to that discussion. I would note that as we may get drug into the debate, individually, cautionary note about the representations regarding Clover Park School District salaries, having been married to a teacher who I, well, attest, was underpaid for about forty years. And that would have been based on results, this tenure. The, I knew that there had been incremental increases since her relatively recent retirement. So the Clover Park School District's salary schedule for somebody who's fifteen years, bachelor's plus two, two years of credits post-graduation, the base for 2016, seventeen was sixty thousand four ninety-three, and the base for the next year was sixty-one thousand four ninety-three. So it, it, it goes up marginally, but in addition to that, the tri-money, the one that's supposed to compensate you for outside the classroom or extra hours, was really the local levy enhancement of salaries, was seventeen percent of the base across the board for sixteen, seventeen, and twenty-three percent for 2018. So that result, that resulted in 2016, seventeen salary of seventy-one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven, and 2017, eighteen for that salary, grid placement of seventy-five thousand six hundred and thirty-six, which by my calculation was a one-year six-point-three percent increase. So far from not having a cost of living increase. It's better than I did. The only other thing I have is that since the date moved, I will not be able to attend the long-awaited official inauguration of the Pavilion in the Park, which will mean that Mr. Whalen will not receive his invitation from me to join me in a cover of the Blues Brothers as part of the opening. So I'm very disappointed I won't be there, but...
You gave for the Truck and Tractor Day?
Yeah, I, I won't be here. No. I'm out of, I'm out of town. So we now, if there's nothing further, we move to executive session, where we'll recess to executive session. We will, for approximately twenty minutes, to discuss pending litigation pursuant to RCW 4231101I, to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation to which the agency is a party, when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. Followed by five minutes to discuss the performance of a public official. We will not take any action when we return other to, than to adjourn. We are in recess for twenty-five minutes.